Good evening, everyone. The administrative meeting, it's not on? Uh-oh. Testing, not on. It's green. Is it plugged in? I don't know. And, okay, that's a problem. I guess, someone gonna do a mic check here? Okay, thank you, Julie. Just a second, please, appreciate your waiting. It is green. That's not working? They're not working?
Check, one, two, check, check. No?
Will, just talk really loud! Yeah. Okay, that's not gonna work either. She can do whatever the language is. Check, check. Nope, nope. So it's something that's happening somewhere else? Okay. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. I hope it'll get taken care of in five minutes. Thank you for your patience. One and welcome. The Burnaleo County Administrative Meeting for this Tuesday, January 24th, will now come to order. All commissioners are present. We're going to begin with a silent invocation and a pledge of allegiance led by Mark Chavis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the virginity and justice of our own.
Thank you, Mark. Item three, Madam County, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chairwoman, yes. There's one change. If we could please defer item 7C, the open space mail levy annual report.
Okay, and it looks like we were deferring it to the meeting of the 21st?
Correct.
February 21st? Okay. Does anyone have any objection? Okay, we'll just go ahead and do that, and that's the only item, Madam?
That's the only item.
County clerk?
Thank you.
County clerk?
Thank you.
County manager, thank you very much. Don't have any proclamations at this point? Also certificates and awards? Well, except for certificates and awards, yep. Item A, human resources. All right, this is the Employee Recognition Programs Award for the second quarter. Madam County Manager.
Madam Chairwoman, the commissioners, it's always my honor to be able to present this recognition to these very deserving employees and outstanding employees of the county. And I am going to, if you all can just, yeah, come up here, and we can just embarrass you for just a little bit. The first one is Eloy Zamora. So Eloy is such a pleasure to work with, and you're always laughing, and you handle pressure well, and you stay as long as it takes to make sure all employees have their paychecks on time. We really need to be nice to you. You began your career in Burnaleo County in 1994 as a clerk typist in the Public Works Department. So after 12 years, you joined the Budget Office in the Finance Division, and for the last eight years, you've been with the payroll office currently in the Human Resources Department. You've been married to Oliver, your amazing and loving compassionate husband, for 27 years. That's awesome. You have four large dogs, Akita, an Akita named Kobe, let me see, you have another dog named Ziba, and you have two German Shepherd named Loki and Hades? Okay. I wanted to pronounce that right. So when you're not at work, you enjoy taking, going to the lake with your family and friends, walking your dogs, or taking a bike ride along the bosque. You always look forward to the festivities of Halloween. That's your favorite holiday. And you like to have a doggy daycare. That would be great, yeah, right? Sometimes I wish I were my dogs, because they go to doggy daycare and they have fun all day long, so. Perhaps near in the future. So just want to congratulate you, and I want to thank you for your service, and congratulations. Thank you. Okay, our next employee is Tracy Dingman. So Tracy Dingman demonstrates a high work ethic and works long hours to keep the website up to date to include the posting of breaking county news. She just feels like it is part of her job, and she does whatever it takes to make it happen, and I know that for sure, because we talk a lot and not during working hours all the time. So you've been with Burnaleo County's Communication Services Department for nearly four years. As website administrator, you supervise the Burnco GovWeb team, as well as the county's social media applications of Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, Instagram, and Instagram. Before coming to Burnaleo County, you were a reporter and columnist for the local and national, for some local and national news outlets. You are an intense animal lover and avid news follower, and you enjoy problem solving, both at work and at home. Tracy is originally from Wisconsin and remains a rapid fan of her Alta, let me see, Altamater, the University of Wisconsin Badgers, and also the Green Bay Packers. Hey, well, you know, come on, you know, they did good. They did, they did good. So she came to New Mexico 27 years after, 27 years ago, for a reporting job at the Albuquerque Journal. She is married to David and has two teenage sons, Gabriel and Aiden. So congratulation, congratulations, Tracy. And next, Victor Martinez. Victor has been a great asset to the county through his excellent customer service and dedication to his duties. He never seems to say no when increased demands are placed on him. Victor has been employed with Burnaleo County for nearly 10 years in the fixed assets section. As property control coordinator among other duties, he is responsible for performing the annual assets inventory, which enables him to visit all county facilities and interact with employees from every department. He enjoys the group with whom he works with and takes pride in all the accomplishments his team has made. He is looking forward to continuing his career with Burnaleo County and collaborating with his coworkers in the coming years. When not at work, Victor enjoys playing basketball with his two sons ages 10 and 13, or attending their basketball games. In his spare time, Victor enjoys a glass fusing, glass fusing, and I was gonna say a glass of wine, but anyway, I do, and making clay sculptures. Congratulations, Victor. Okay, let's see. So true, okay. Next is, let's see, Sergeant Nick Huffmeyer. So the effort, dedication, and attention to detail demonstrated by Sergeant Nick Huffmeyer cannot be overstated. Okay, so Nick was hired by the county as a sheriff's deputy with the Sheriff's Department in February of 2008, and has since been promoted to sergeant. As a deputy, he served in the following units: he's served in the Field Services Division, Street Crimes, Narcotics, Emergency Response Team, Field Training Officer, Training Weapons and Tactics, and the GRIP, that's the Gang Intel Unit. As a sergeant, he has served in the following units: Sergeant Field Services Division and Advanced Training Sergeant at the BCSO Regional Training Academy. Sergeant Huffmeyer holds numerous instructor certifications, such as firearms, use of force, active shooter, and TASER. Notable projects in 2016 include the implementation of the first-ever BCSO Leadership Academy and the construction of a large-scale advanced training facility at the West Side Shooting Range. When he isn't working, he cherishes his time with his wife Sarah and son Kane, and enjoys working out at the gym. So thank you so much, Sergeant Huffmeyer, for your service. We really appreciate it. Next is Chris Castillo. And Chris is not here? Okay, but I'd like to just say a few words about Chris. So Chris Castillo demonstrates enthusiasm, critical thinking, knowledge, and commitment to our organization. I know that I can always count on him to tackle any assignment with confidence and motivation. That's what his supervisor says. Chris has been employed with Burnaleo County since 2007. He started in the county's Clerk's Office, working in the Bureau of Elections as a voting machine technician. In 2011, Chris transferred to the Facilities Department and currently works as a building maintenance technician. He has also served as a representative member of the Facilities Safety Committee since 2014. Chris has been married to his wife Jackie for four years, and they are raising a very small spoiled shih-tzu named Smalls. In his free time, he can be found at home watching baseball or football, rooting for the Boston Red Sox and Atlanta Falcons, or he, yay, or he may be in his garage working with wood, crafting unique furniture cabinets, children's toys, and extraordinary cutting boards. So congratulations to Chris Castillo. Alrighty, and last but not least, Danielle Vaquera. So Danielle has been, she has passion for helping people, and that I can say firsthand, I've truly witnessed. Her work goes, her work ethic goes beyond expectation, and she has a heart of gold. Danielle began her journey with the county nearly four years ago in the Purchasing Department, where she was fortunate to learn about one of the most fulfilling positions within the county. Currently, as the unclaimed and inigent cremation program coordinator, she is that extended helpful hand, helping hand, and in one of the, and is one of the most, in the most vulnerable times of need, putting ethics and morals first, striving to treat everyone with dignity and respect all humanity deserves. When she is not dedicated to the family members within the community of Burnaleo County, Danielle is at home enjoying the true lights of her life, her family. Danielle enjoys most being with her wife Elizabeth Vaquera, their nine-year-old son, daughter, excuse me, Victoria, and three-year-old Adelina, with whom life is always exciting. She enjoys, she enjoys brain games, puzzles, music, dancing, and finding what makes her simply happy in life. And you are a happy person, you're great to be around. She believes, she believes with the busy world around, it's always important to stop and smell the roses. So congratulations and thank you, Danielle. So here is our employees of the quarter, and again, this is an honor to work with you all and a privilege, and I thank you for all your service. Thank you very much.
And we thank you very much as well. Would you please come up so we can get, shake your hand and get a photograph? Julie, before I go on, I have, there's a couple of litigation, when do those get read? Okay, well, we'll just get those done right away, and typically the vice chair will read these. So you read these.
I offer the following statements regarding the closed litigation meeting held on Tuesday, January 24th, 2017. At 3:30 PM, only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting, held on Tuesday, January 24th, 2017, at 3:30 PM, were discussed at this disclosed meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement, and it will become part of the minutes of this meeting.
There is a motion by Commissioner Johnson and a second by myself to approve the statement. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say no, the motion carries.
I move that the Burnaleo County Attorney be authorized to proceed with the real properties matters discussed in the closed meeting, held on Tuesday, January 24th, 2017, at 3:30 PM, within the perimeter set by this commission.
So motion and a second to approve litigation statement two. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say no, the motion carries. Thank you. All right, that takes us next to item six, board and committee appointments. First item is 6A, Arts Board, Arts Board Appointment. Vice Chair, Commissioner Casala.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, one improvement real quick. I would like to wish happy birthday to Michelle Luna, my assistant, before I move through this. I'm not gonna tell you her age, but it's about 22. Happy birthday, Michelle. I promise I won't listen. So, moving on, motion to approve the appointment of Oscar LaSoya to the Arts Board, representing Commission District Two.
So motion and a second to approve the appointment under 6A. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say no, the motion carries. Takes us to 6B, County Planning Commission Appointment.
Motion to approve the appointment of Johnny Pena, representing Commission District Two and the County Planning Commission.
So motion and a second to approve item 6B. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say no, the motion carries. Item 6C. So that's Detention Facility, Appointment to the Detention Facility Oversight Advisory Board. Vice Chair Casala.
Motion to approve the appointment of Ronnie Martinez, representing Commission District Two and the Detention Facility Oversight Management Advisory Board.
Motion and a second to approve item 6C. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say no, the motion carries. Takes us to six.
Motion to approve the appointment of Jerome Valia, representing at-large to the Detention Facility Oversight Management Advisory Board.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Stevens.
If I may, before we vote on this, I'd just like to ask our county attorney a question. So several years ago, I can't remember exactly when it was, we passed a resolution that would allow a new commissioner to replace appointees on these various boards. It was my understanding at the time that that was for district-specific appointments. Does that also apply to at-large appointments?
Thank you, and, it's pretty loud. We did take a look at that, and the language is actually kind of not clear. It's one of those things where you have the district-specific appointments, and then you have the at-large appointments, and it speaks to not necessarily that, but also the vacancies. But all appointments then end up going to the commission for approval, so in the end, they all end up being treated somewhat the same with regard to them then being subject to a commission approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, there was a motion and a second to approve the appointment at-large. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say no, the motion carries. Takes us to item 6D, which is the DW Planning Council Appointment. Vice Chair Casala.
Motion to approve the appointment of Robert Marcott to the DWI Planning Council, representing Commission District Two.
So motion and a second to approve item 6D. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say no, the motion carries. Takes us to 6E, and that's the Youth Sports Commission Appointment.
Motion to approve the appointment of Leonard Garcia to the Youth Sports Commission, representing Commission District Two.
So motion and a second to approve item 6E, Youth Sports Commission Appointment. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say no, the motion carries. Thank you. Takes us next to item seven. This is public comment and communications. So Julie, did you, okay. Everything working out okay with the audio system?
My green light is on this. I can move it closer, do you?
It was doing, you know, that back stuff, whatever they call that?
Back stuff, feedback.
Thanks, thank you for understanding, she's dealing with an older person. Okay, so, public comment. So the, we have, I don't know how many folks speaking. We have eight people sign up to speak. You are given two minutes to make your comment, and then at about a minute and a half, there's a bell that rings so that you can close your comments. You have 30 seconds to close your comments. So the first person, please come on up and welcome, sign up to speak, is Julie.
Frank Devonport, Bill Weiss, Michelle Melendez.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the first person again is?
Frank Devonport, Bill Weiss, Michelle Melendez.
Okay, I don't think Frank, Frank must not be here. I don't see, okay, so then it's?
Bill Weiss.
Okay, Dr. Weiss, okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Commissioners, it's Bill Weiss. I'm here for Pathways and the Mill Levy. I'm a physician with experience in primary care at UNM faculty, public health and health policy. I was a member of the healthcare task force appointed by you, the commissioners, two years ago to create a report with recommendations of the use of the Mill Levy. I speak now as an individual. Priorities of the Mill Levy should be used primarily for what is truly important and not otherwise fundable. These are very precious resources because they're unrestricted, but they should be used for what's important and fundable, unfundable, otherwise, specifically to enable access of needed, to needed services by uninsured, low-income county residents, and for creating a health impact for groups of particular risk. Prominent among the specific recommendations of the report of the Health Task Force is, in addition to assuring patients accessing the hospital, that the hospital should also be doing active outreach to serve and connect with the many residents who have serious healthcare needs but who are not patients actively engaged with healthcare. Many are people who do not connect or are unable to sustain connection because they are entangled and constrained in any of a variety of personal barriers, socially driven circumstances that keep them away from effective medical behavioral care. Addressing these needs is exactly what Pathways navigators do. The Pathways partnership is a quintessential example of what the Mill Levy can uniquely provide. The Mill Levy has dedicated money to the, to Pathways at the 1% level. Some want it to be 2%, with the demonstrated effectiveness and evaluation of Pathways, perhaps we should seriously consider 3% or even 4%. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reese, and thank you for also serving on the task force. I see some members here as well. Okay, next person, thank you, welcome.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Michelle Melendez, and I work now for Ele Valle, a collaborative in the South Valley. And I participated in the development of the MOU and the lease agreement more than nine years ago, when I served as your appointee to the UNM Board of Trustees for the hospitals. And it was unheard of back then to spend any money, any, especially recurring funds, on a program that addressed the social determinants of health. Burnaleo County and UNM were very unique throughout the country in regards to partnering with community-based organizations to reach the most vulnerable people in our communities and connect them with the available resources. Since then, I've had the chance to participate in numerous national conferences, federal grants, foundation programs, and foundation grants, and some peer research, peer-reviewed research. And I have to tell you, the whole rest of the country is trying to catch up with us. And they visit us and they ask us how we're doing it, and they want to be doing some of the same upstream investments that we're doing. Nonprofit hospitals and health systems across the country are investing more and more, not only in community health workers, which is where we began, but in economic development, in housing development, in grocery stores, and other ways to create jobs while also promoting health. These kinds of investments can really be multiplied in our community very, very, very well. You'll hear more about that tonight. Wherever we go, we talk about pathways to a healthy Burnaleo County, and how we're outcomes-based, we pay only for results, and we're accountable to the community. Everyone wants to know how we're doing it, and this Pathways model is what attracted the Kellogg Foundation to invest in Ele Valle, where I work, $1.5 million to support the proliferation of this model. Also, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation is very interested in how we can address addiction and use pathways as a model for reaching those folks who don't have connection to resources. I just want to say that we're also in the process of applying for the Robert Wood Johnson Culture of Health Prize, and we are highlighting Pathways as one of the successes that sets us apart in the nation. So thank you for your support of Pathways, and we also request an increase.
Thank you. Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michelle, since you're here. I hope you'll be willing just to answer a couple of quick questions. So I got to know you when I joined the county commission, because you were our appointee to the University Hospital Board of Trustees. And you just mentioned that you had had a role in negotiating the MOU eight years ago. Can you describe that process? What was the involvement of the Board of Trustees in the negotiation of the MOU?
Well, my involvement really grew out of the Community Coalition for Healthcare Access, which worked very closely with UNM hospitals and the county commission, the New Mexico Center on Law and Poverty, a very broad group of folks who were all looking at how we could address these health issues that were landing up in the ER. So we had a series of meetings over more than a few years to really arrive at how much could be spent on these upstream kinds of inventions, interventions. to really arrive at how much could be spent on these upstream kinds of inventions, interventions, how it could be structured in such a way that it doesn't have to be reapplied for, by the county every single year, so that that money is, is very sustainable over time and that it serves as an investment in the capacity of the community to reach these folks. So that's why it was incorporated in the MOU language specifically.
So it sounds as if the process you had eight years ago was similar to what we had done when we set up the community task force to look at these issues, get community input into what the commission has, what we should be asking for in the MOU. What was the intervention point, though? I guess that's my question, because we have the task force report, we have made recommendations, or we have provided our request to University Hospital. How was it that you were able to accomplish that carve-out essentially for Pathways? Was that something that was negotiated, like, in discussions between the Board of Trustees and, and the hospital administrators? Or was it a community discussion with the, with the hospital administrators? How did that work?
It began with a community discussion and a community planning process that informed the county commission on what we believed would make the most difference in the health of our communities. And then the county commission took its role in terms of being the, the signatory on the lease and said, "This is what we want in terms of results for the Burnaleo County residents and how it could be accomplished." So you took recommendations from the community, and it was a pretty broad process.
And, so, thank you for that. And, and I want to thank you for your work as our representative on that board. Um, I know that the task force that was appointed two years ago also came up with that same recommendation. So we are, I think, as a commission, trying to either at least meet, if not exceed, what you had negotiated years ago. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, next speaker.
Bill Wagner, Don Trader, Tad Neminski.
Welcome, Dr. Wagner. Who's next?
Hello.
I'm sorry.
Frank Davenport is now here.
Okay, thank you.
Hello to the chamber. My name is Frank, and I just wanted to, uh, let you know about, uh, La Placita and the Pathways Program, what it's, um, done for me personally. It's, uh, helped me get into nice housing, like a dream come true, you know? And, um, also, it's there, they're there for me when I have, uh, problems that, um, that I don't know who to turn to. And I, I call Thomas Martinez, he's the director over there at La Placita. And they're, usually they help me work it out. And, uh, I just wanted to, uh, to let everybody know that it's a good program, and I think they could use a lot more programs like that. And, um, do, uh, you know, what they're doing is great because, uh, where I live, I see a lot of people that are out there homeless. And when I talk to them, like, half of them are veterans. And it's like, uh, it's, when they go wandering off in the night, I always wonder, where do they go, you know? And, um, I just think, uh, they could set more programs up like that for, for the homeless and the ones that are kind of lost, because it is a good program. And, uh, they help a lot of people. I know they've helped me immensely turn my life around.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Wagner, Don Trader, Tad Neminski.
Welcome.
Hi, my name's Bill Wagner, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Um, thank you for, uh, hearing us. I'm here to speak about the Pathways Program. And, um, I'm the executive director and the founder of Centro Savila, which is an outpatient mental health program in the South Valley. Um, we serve over a thousand, uh, non-duplicated clients a year in terms of providing, uh, professional licensed outpatient mental health services. We, uh, see, enroll about two thousand people a year in Medicaid and, uh, health insurance through, uh, PEMOSA and New Mexico HICS. And, uh, we provide a lot of other social services, including food security and assistance, uh, with getting people their basic needs met. Um, like Mr. Davenport, who just spoke, um, at one of our partner organizations in Ele Valle, this collaborative, uh, in the South Valley. Um, a lot of our clients have, have gone and tried to get help at other places. And they end up at our agencies because we are, in a sense, the safety net to the safety net. We are in the community, we're accessible. Uh, we have people that can relate to, um, the needs of our community. And the Pathways navigators are key to really, um, helping people resolve these problems. And they don't, um, you know, just give them a brochure. They accompany them and make sure that, um, that those services are, are provided. They don't get paid unless they do. Having these access points that are not just located at a central hospital, but are located in the community, that are culturally and linguistically appropriate, that are right there for them, is key. And so if, um, you know, it's possible, uh, to expand these types of programs, um, I think the county commission, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from Darrell Smith and Claudia Medina, the, the program, uh, directors, uh, in the, in the, in the next minutes, that this is an incredible opportunity to, to help people and to save a lot of money and to save, more than anything, a lot of suffering for Burnaleo County residents. So thank you.
Thank you.
Don Trader, Tad Neminski, Jerry Montoya.
Welcome.
Prophet Martin Luther King Jr. damned the Vietnam War in his most controversial speech on April fourth, nineteen sixty-seven, exactly one year before he was assassinated. King damned the US mass murder of Vietnamese people. King said, quote, "The greatest purveyor of violence in the world today is my own government." The New York Times, the Washington Post, many newspapers nationwide condemned his strong message of truth. Many whites, many blacks, the White House, even most of King's inner circle of black leaders condemned his strong message of truth. He suffered much hatred, many death threats. Why is that speech far less known, far less honored, far less quoted than his "I have a dream" speech? Sadly, most King celebrations today castrate his message. Sadly, most King celebrations do not, do not emphasize his strong stand against nuclear weapons, against the Vietnam War, against the evils of capitalism and the US empire. Martin Luther King Jr. was a prophet, not a politician, not a rock star. He refused to silence his conscience. He refused to sell out his convictions to get the popular support of millions and the approval of the powerful.
Thank you.
Tad Neminski, Jerry Montoya.
Thank you. My name's Tad Neminski. Well, so many things, uh, not enough time. First point, merging sheriff with APD. Have a fire department, nine-one-one, and all communication. Excellent idea, except when it comes to the sheriff, has to comply same what is APD going now with Department of Justice, Apollo Camera, Aldiff, and so on. Because in present time, it's too much duplication between two governments in a overlap function, overlap. When come to these two, three office, excuse me, departments, whatever you want to call them. Now, appointment. Listening, no discussion. Very smart, very wise commissioners. Well, oh, I heard also that Citibank was slammed with one and a half billion in funds. That's right. Now, closed meetings. Well, also, how about how much public input at this meeting now we have? Not much. No wonder people complaining. The politician, elected official politician, don't listen us. Well, look at what's happened last Saturday. Angry women, I am angry woman, all me thousands of women at City Plaza. All this P word, F word, and, and also students showing China, drawing.
Thank you.
Jerry Montoya.
Non-causey.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Jerry Montoya. I work for the New Mexico Department of Health. Um, and part of that role, I sit on the Community Pathways Advisory Committee. And so I like to, um, talk a little bit about Pathways, and in doing so, appreciate this county commission, the, um, the staff at UNM Pathways, uh, the partnering agencies, and the community health workers in the field that are doing the work of Pathways. And I like to do that in, in three different ways. The first is, not too many programs out of, funded out of Pathways are not only addressing the health, but also the social determinants that impact the well-being of individuals, families, and communities for Burnaleo County. What does that mean? A lot of times we throw that term out, social determinants of health. I'll just put it out to you all. What does it mean when a GED enters a home? Well, that means that, um, job, uh, security can be improved. When sustainable housing hits a family, um, that means a lot of health and wellness for each individual in that family. Um, so those, that's what we mean by, by social determinants of health. Uh, the second is, not too many programs funded through the Mill Levy are routinely reported to your constituents about the, the status, the progress, and the challenges that are facing those programs, and getting their input on how we could better change those programs to better meet the needs of the constituents of Burnaleo County. And then finally, um, not too many programs funded out of the Mill Levy are evaluated and studied, not just for the return on investment, which we're going to hear about a little bit later tonight, but also the impact that they're having on, uh, the individuals, families, and communities of Burnaleo County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the last speaker? No?
One more, Non-causey.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair and the Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak, uh, in front of you this evening. And I would like for you to please pay attention because I speak fast and I have an accent. I'm not going to say much about Pathways because a lot of people already talked about Pathways. But I want you to imagine this evening, a woman who's been widowed from the Middle East, who has lived in five refugee camps and finally found, was lucky to come to Alba Kuki to find a new home, to rebuild themselves. Imagine a Congo, a Congo woman who has about nine children or ten children. She's also lived in refugee camps, running away from genocide and conflict, and has lived in refugee camps for so long, and then was lucky to come to Alba Kuki, our, you know, our, our state. And so I want to remember for you also to think about how this woman who's from Middle East, who's never gone to school, who was never went out of his house to do anything and to take up any job. Then she has to come here, she's placed in a, it's a good place for them because they were in refugee camps, placed in an apartment where they're supposed to get out in the morning to go to find a job. They have to go to find a ride. They have to go to human services to apply for food stamps, but language is a barrier for them. And then when, even when they get there sometimes, once in a while, the agency that helps them at the food stamp place may not have the language or interpreter to interpret for her from her language to English. And so, and imagine that person, the same person who doesn't know how to read, when the email is sent from human services, and then all of a sudden, they don't receive the mail, but they are told your food stamps or money has been cut. Imagine that African woman who has never seen, I mean, like, a trash can or a hotel or never washed dishes in a business. And then she has to go to work, and then she has to follow all the rules, but there's no one in there to talk, to speak in her language. Imagine all the people that get sick in the night, like the refugees, they don't know who to call at night, they have no cell phones. And then imagine how it, it is bad for them if somebody dies in that apartment because they could not call nine-one-one. And so I am glad that Pathways exists because many refugees that I've, I work with, with my husband and other people, have been able to access resource, resources in an equitable manner. And I thank you so much for considering Pathways today. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, and that was the last speaker. We have a couple of, um, presentations. First, um, having to do with, uh, the University of, of New Mexi- of New Mexico Hospital Report, and that would be a presentation by Steve McKernan. Julie, what, how much, and then will be followed by a presentation of the Pathways Program. But, um, how long have we allotted? How much time is, have we allotted per presentation?
Five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to brief this evening. My name is Steve McKernan, I serve as the Administrator at the University of New Mexico Hospital. We have our, uh, standard report, uh, available for you, if you don't mind. I wasn't going to dig into that because we only have five minutes. Uh, but just talk about some of the other things that are, if I can say, going on right now as it relates to UNM Hospital. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this report that, uh, the Commissioners have. I think the big thing that is a focus for the hospital, and it is in a lot of different places, is what's going to happen now with the Affordable Care Act. One context or perspective I'd like to put on it as it relates to New Mexico is we have a population of approximately two point one million people in New Mexico. We have nine hundred thousand people in New Mexico that are on Medicaid. There's about fifty thousand people that are on the exchanges. In other parts of the country, those numbers are very, very different. I believe, I think UNM believes, the real big issue is about Medicaid and the ACA in New Mexico. Uh, that's where the greatest amount of coverage is, that's where the greatest pickup was. Uh, about over three hundred thousand, almost three hundred and fifty thousand more people in New Mexico received an insurance card under Medicaid expansion for the ACA than were previously covered. Notwithstanding that, when we started into this, it was originally projected that there were about four hundred thousand people in New Mexico that were uninsured. Right now, it is projected that there are about two hundred thousand people uninsured, notwithstanding that there was over three hundred thousand people picked up by Medicaid. So all the numbers don't necessarily sync up. And what we're trying to do at UNM is understand where those transitions have occurred. What we do know is that those people are seeking care at our organization, mostly from Burnaleo County in the metro area. But we're still receiving a lot of people from around the state of New Mexico. And under federal law, called EMTALA, Emergency Medical Treatment and Active Labor Act, any hospital can refer any patient to any other hospital, and the other hospital must take that patient unless it does not have capacity. So we still get many referrals into our organization. A general rule of thumb in our business is when somebody gets an insurance card, they're going to use twice as much healthcare. going to use twice as much healthcare as before they had an insurance card. So if we take the state of New Mexico, you gave 300,000 people new insurance cards, but you have no new hospitals, you have about the same number of doctors, about the same number of nurses, maybe a couple of more clinics than you had before the Affordable Care Act started. What that gets us into is that there is tremendous demand for services against a very restricted supply of doctors, nurses, hospitals, and capabilities. Those are our, those are the things we're facing right now. We're trying to sort through them and trying to understand what's going to happen at the federal government, and then we're going to have to be doing strategic planning related to how to adapt to those situations. I'll be happy to answer any questions on the finances, which are stable for the hospital. Our volumes are up, our acuity levels are up, but otherwise, the hospital is stable right now. And then this other issue that I just addressed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Miss Chair, are there any questions for Madam Chair?
Mr. Talbert Paul, by Commissioner Stebbins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McKernan, your comment around, yeah, feedback, your comment around the Affordable Care Act and Medicaid, so we added 300,000 people into the program when the Affordable Care Act came out, is that, is that what you said, mentioned for New Mexico, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Talbert, correct.
So if, let's say, they swipe the pen and they reverse it, does that, and those 300,000 people aren't on Medicaid anymore, they still obviously will go for services, just maybe not at the same rate they did before because they theoretically don't have a card, as you mentioned, would you see the hospital still inundated, but in a different capacity, meaning possibly emergency room visits now? Because having to be seen versus having a card and possibly going to a primary care, which I think was part of the intent, was to get people more headed towards primary care and clinics versus emergency room because of having insurance? Am I on the right path or completely off?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Talbert, I think you're on the right path. The one thing you do when you give somebody insurance card is you raise expectations and raise access to care. So, we have a number of patients that previously were not treated for very complex chronic conditions, who now have been set up in our primary care clinics under the patient-centered medical home, and as we was referred to in Pathways, are referred to our center, and now they're under active treatment. If you withdraw their card, we do not expect those people to step back from seeking active treatment. And as you know, we still have our UNM Care Program, Financial Assistance Program, in which we provide financial assistance for patients up to 300% of the poverty guidelines. So we would expect this rise in demand for services to continue regardless of whether under, if the ACA is, you know, revised, and the Medicaid goes down, and those type of things. It's still going to be a lot of, we believe it's still going to be a lot of demand for services.
And that was, I appreciate you saying that. That was sort of my point, is I think people, you know, obviously, people can say they don't like the Affordable Care Act, they want something different. But the reality is in New Mexico, people have been getting services, will continue to need services, and UNMH is going to continue to need support at whatever level, and continue to need to support those who have been coming at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Stebbins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Steve, I've just got a couple of questions. Page 12 has a slide that shows the primary reason for indigent visits. Number one is mental disorders. I guess that would be include addiction or substance use disorders. Please, it's page 12 on our.
Yes, Madam Chair, and I apologize for the small font. I keep asking them to get it bigger. I can't even read. Commissioner Stebbins, yes, that would include substance disorders.
Okay. So there's a very significant variation, almost 100% jump, or difference between the highs and lows. How do you account for that? So, you know, in one quarter, there's 2,000 visits, two quarters later, there's 5,000. Now we're, looks like in the last quarter, again, just under 5,000. Why the variation?
Madam Chair, or Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stevens, some of them have to do with some data input issues that are related to, over the past year, about 15 months, there have been huge changes in the federal regs about how you code visits. There's this, gets technical, but a movement from what was called ICD-9 to ICD-10. And that made for some revenue cycle issues at the hospital about recording the visits and getting them input into the system. And they're recorded on the day they're input. So, to the extent that we didn't get them inputted in the proper period, they roll over into the next period, and that's why you're seeing swings in some of those. But you can take as an average, we're pretty steady in that group of patients that we're seeing at the hospital.
So that, you're saying that fluctuation is really due to how the data was entered as opposed to the number of actual visits or encounters?
Yes.
How do individuals with behavioral health disorders enter your system?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stevens, they enter through a variety of different pathways. One is, it could be the emergency room. They pick up a diagnosis, put it over to the adult or child psych center. A second is, they come to our primary care clinics, and they're picked up in the primary care clinics with that diagnosis. And we do have psych services deployed in all our primary care clinics. So one of the visits you could see there actually could occur in our primary care clinics. We have referrals directly into our adult psych center. We have our sheriff and police pick folks up, and they are transferred to our psych center, seen either in the urgent care, psych urgent care, or the psych emergency room. Or we have referrals from community physicians or statewide physicians directly into our psych center and are seen by our providers.
Thank you for that. So, a couple of years ago, we were at a meeting, you and I, and Dr. Roth and Dr. Toen, were at a meeting where there were some concerns about the appointment system, the way individuals were, had access to the behavioral health services. I understand there's been a significant change in how people make appointments now. Can you explain that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stevens, there are two things that, a couple of things that have occurred. One is, under the leadership of Dr. Toen, we've improved our efficiency in our psych services, and especially our substance abuse services, added some providers, added some access points like the primary care clinics, and that has allowed for better response time in being able to see those patients, especially in substance abuse, opioid addiction, which was significantly long and is much shorter right now. The second thing that we started was what we call a centralized scheduling center. So before, we had each clinic doing their own scheduling. So there were inconsistencies in the organization, and now we do that through a centralized fashion in which we can keep metrics on how patients are scheduled, how time to answer the phone, and referrals, and that has helped us with both our customer service and with our efficiency in getting patients appointed.
And that's really good to hear. I mean, so, in the past, there was a situation where if someone got, if an individual were referred to university hospital, say, from first choice, there used to be a process where they had to sometimes wait three days in a row. So show up, maybe get seen, come back the next day. Has that changed?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stevens, generally speaking, that's why we started the psych urgent care, which is an urgent care clinic inside the adult psych center. It can take walk-ins. We've extended the hours for that clinic, so it's running more hours, seeing more patients. It's a very successful program, and now serves as one of the principal entry points for patients into our system. So then they get referred out of the psych center to a regular provider, either at one of the primary care clinics or in the adult psych center, and we follow up with our regular providers after they've been seen. It also offers an opportunity for med refills. Some people just need a med refill. We can do a med refill there. And some people just have an urgent need, seen at the urgent care center, and then they get their regular treatment in the regular process.
You mentioned law enforcement, sometimes bringing individuals in. I think, as you heard at that meeting, law enforcement sometimes felt that people weren't, were dropped off there but not really treated. Are you seeing any change in that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stevens, I'd have to let one of our medical staff members like Dr. Toen answer that, and I can try and get him at the next meeting or get him to get a synopsis to the Commission. Generally, no, the New Mexico statutes related to being able to treat and keep a patient in psyche, a licensed psychiatric center are the same now as they've been for years. And it's a very high bar, very high standard to get across, is the patient really has to be a threat to themselves or the community before a physician can write a commitment order. And then that commitment order has to be reviewed within 72 hours by the court to either renew that commitment order or release that patient from the commitment order.
So you're saying if law enforcement brings somebody to the urgent care, the psychiatric center, is not interested in getting treatment, is not a danger to himself or herself or others, they can just walk out the door?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stevens, that is the law in the state of New Mexico.
And I know we don't have a lot of time. One last question. So we have a presentation on Pathways tonight. What do you think of the Pathways Program?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stevens, I think it's been a good program that UNM Hospital has supported. It is principally run by the Health Sciences Center through our Department of Community Medicine, and what we try and do is make sure the Pathways Program has a medical diagnosed related to those pathways, and that those patients can be referred to our patient-centered medical homes, and that that is part of that pathway and treatment. Because UNM Hospital at its base is a hospital, is a medical treatment facility, and we certainly understand the social determinants of health, but our primary mission is to care for medical conditions.
Do you feel over the last eight years that the Pathways Program has helped university hospital deliver care to a population that might have issues with accessing or navigating your system?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stevens, I think the data that Claudia is going to produce, and Daryl will produce in a couple of moments, will show that it is another access point to UNM Hospital. So it's people who are out in the community, they're identifying people with not only social but medical needs, and through that process, they have a direct ability to help get patients into our clinic system.
Do you feel that the level at which university hospital is funding that now, and I know that was designated or spelled out in the previous MOU or the existing MOU, do you feel that that is reaching everybody who could take advantage of this service at, funding at that level?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stevens, that would be a hard question for me to answer. We think it's been a good program, and we've been supportive of it at its current level.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Casada.
Chair, I've got a few questions. So you said that people who have, you know, 300,000?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, my reference was to people that were enrolled in Medicaid, went up 300,000. So it went from a little bit below 600,000, about 580,000 prior, in the month prior to the implementation of the Affordable Care Act on January 1, 2014, to right now, that enrollment number is about 900,000. And so when I refer to the insurance card, in New Mexico, we use what's called an MCO or Managed Care Organization Mechanism. So when you're enrolled in Medicaid, then you get a card to Presbyterian, Blue Cross, United, or Molina. Patients view that card as if it were an insurance card.
Okay, so, I mean, for me, the way it looks like to me, it seems like an opportunity for, that people now have access to healthcare, and so it looks like, you know, that we have an opportunity to provide that in a larger scale. And when we do that, it seems to me that we create more jobs, more jobs in healthcare, even though that more people are going into healthcare to look for jobs, I mean, are perhaps in education. So, you know, my question is, you know, UNMH is where it seems a lot of people have nowhere to go. And I'll tell you, there's a lot of people in my district that don't have nowhere to go. We have zero hospitals on my side of town. And we have health clinics, but we don't have hospitals. So we don't access healthcare. I think that if we expanded where we can get these, have these opportunities to see a provider, I think that's something that we have to look at as a city and as partnerships with UNM, Presbyterian, Loveless, whoever, providers that we have here in the city and out here. It looks like an opportunity to me to really reach out and create not only access, but to create jobs. So when I listen to you speak, my, my mind says, that seems to me like we should be doing better and providing more instead of putting everything on you at a facility that's so far away from, from most of the residents in my district. How do you feel about that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, one thing we didn't get into, I think your points are very well taken. I think that's what we've been trying to do at UNM, is trying to expand community-based clinics and access points. The dilemma we're seeing with Medicaid right now is when it started off in January 2014, reimbursement rates were very good. And we saw a significant bump in our revenue, we added a lot of people to our payroll, we expanded clinics significantly, and access points. Since that time, and especially about seven months ago, the reimbursement rates for Medicaid have been cut significantly. All the MCOs have tried to renegotiate contracts with UNM, lower the rates. There's a regulation that really makes it difficult. As a matter of fact, United Healthcare no longer has a contract with UNM, so it can minimize what it reimburses to UNM, and certain past due payments like disproportionate share have been discontinued to UNM. So our funding levels for Medicaid have actually been reduced significantly in the last year as a result of these changes. As we look to further ability to offer access in the community, the challenging part is Medicaid is paying significantly less than cost. And so that makes it challenging to be able to expand programs.
One of my big pushes as a school board member was that we would have school-based health centers. And so that you're providing people with cards, I call it insurance cards, that they would have access within their communities, within their schools. That's been a big push for the community school model. How does UNMH look at being, using that and being a partner with that in order to help out with some of the issues that you're having at the main hospital?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, we're open to discussion on school-based clinics. There are some technical issues that I think, because of time constraints, we might get into, be happy to brief you on. Related to that, they have to deal with confidentiality, how medical records are structured, accreditation, they're very technical issues. We do have one very successful such clinic at Attrisco Heritage. It's a community-based clinic that's run from about 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning as a school-based clinic, then at 10:00 in the morning, it opens up as a community-based clinic. And that one has worked very well, works mostly under a nurse practitioner model, and we believe the school's pleased with it and the community is pleased with it. So we do have experience at running a clinic like that, and because of the size of Attrisco Heritage, the scope works for us relatively well.
Are there any other questions? Or, Mr. McKernan, thank you very much, Mr. McKernan.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. So next is, we have a presentation on the Pathways Program by Claudia Medina and Daryl Smith. Welcome.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present to you this evening on the pathways program. My name is Daryl Smith, and I'm the program manager for Pathways since it was rolled out in 2009. And I'm here with my friend and supervisor.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, commissioners, my name is Claudia Medina, and I'm the Director of Community Health Worker Initiatives, which is under the UNM Office for Community Health.
So Pathways to a Healthy Bernalillo County, which is the program's official name, rolled out in the summer of 2009 after a more than one and a half year community-driven planning process. Funding for the program was written into the MOU pertaining to the Mill Levy funds that was signed on May 12, 2009 by the County Commission and UNM Board of Regents. And in your packets, I included a copy of the memorandum of understanding with the signatures. The Pathways Program in Bernalillo County was designed by the community to find and engage the most difficult-to-reach populations residing in the county and connect them to needed services, following an outcomes-based national care coordination model that was tailored to meet Bernalillo County's needs. So this is a national model, but through the planning process here in the community, we changed a lot of the model to focus much more on many of the issues that contribute to poor health, other than access to healthcare. There is an abundance of evidence demonstrating that programs designed to address the social determinants, deliver the greatest benefit to the neediest community members, exactly the ones that our program is designed to reach. The evidence also shows how addressing social factors has a major impact on health. This current fiscal year, 83% of the funds that we receive are contracted out to our 13 community partner organizations, many of them represented here this evening. This investment in community adds tremendous value to our county's safety net by connecting the hardest-to-reach county residents to the wide spectrum of services they need, helping them remain connected to those services and maximizing their chances of achieving successful lasting outcomes. The pathways navigators, many of which are here tonight as well, are all employed and housed at these community partner organizations. They connect participants to multiple programs that reinforce each other. For example, housing plus employment, or resolution of medical debt plus establishment of a healthcare home. Each program compounds and cements the benefits of the other, thus making each dollar invested in the county's social safety net go that much further. So when a participant first engages in the program, the navigators conduct a thorough risk assessment to help determine the multiple needs, and along the way, document every step of the process in our database. The data collection enables us, it's a way to verify outcomes, knowing where the client started when they first entered into the program, all the way up to the point that they exited the program, to look for health improvements. We do our very best to conduct follow-up exit interviews with people that exited the program to see how they're doing, usually nine days or so after they've left the program. I will admit we've struggled doing this longer term, because many of the individuals and families that we're working with relocate a lot, they move around, they have very unstable housing, they change their phone numbers. So it's very hard to keep in touch with these people longer term. It's something that we've been working on. So each pathway is evidence-based, meaning that there's credible scientific research demonstrating that factors like housing, employment, access to food, and having healthcare improve health. We're using the results of this research to estimate how the progress made by the program participants translate into improved health, more efficient use of our healthcare system, and ultimately decreased healthcare costs. So in November 2015, our program contracted with Dr. Kelly O'Donnell, a local and very well-respected economist, to help us quantify the value of pathways using the mountains of data that the navigators have collected from every individual that they've worked with over the past seven and a half years. Dr. O'Donnell has conducted a cost-benefit analysis, weighing the sum of pathways program costs and service delivery costs against the estimated benefits of pathways completion, to yield an estimated return on investment. And those also are included in your packets. So far, five return-on-investment analyses have been completed, and all five have demonstrated a positive return on investment. For example, for every dollar invested by Pathways in helping clients to obtain permanent affordable housing, between $1.2 to $2 in healthcare savings are realized. Since 2009, completion of the medical debt pathway has reduced participants' medical bills by roughly $3.7 million, and reduced their hospitalizations and emergency department use by over 50%. And finally, completion of the employment pathway has generated approximately $8.1 million in income for Pathways clients. Every dollar invested in the administration of the employment pathway produced almost $13 in additional income for extremely needy county residents. And Dr. O'Donnell is here this evening, if there are any questions pertaining to the return on investment. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to Claudia, who's going to share a personal story with you. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, commissioners, we have heard all evening how valuable Pathways is. And I don't have to convince you that this is a very good program. But I want to read to you a story that would illustrate more clearly the connection between the navigators that work at those 13 agencies that are here tonight, and the community health workers that are right now housed at the emergency department and the primary care clinics, including Commissioner Casada, the one at Attrisco Heritage, and at the Southwest Mesa Clinic, as well as the North Valley Clinic, the Southeast Side Clinic, you name it, we have them everywhere. So this is the story that would help you clarify or visualize how this works. So Isabel, this is the story of Isabel, and I made up the name because of confidentiality reasons, but this is the story of Isabel and her son, Mario. So Isabel's youngest son, Mario, suffers from asthma and last week had another asthma attack. Isabel took him to the emergency room at UNM Hospital, where she was seen by one of our community health workers that we have now placed at the emergency room. And this community health worker asked Isabel a few questions about housing, food insecurity, employment, et cetera, did a very good screening about the non-medical issues that this family was going through. Isabel told the community health worker that she was living temporarily with a relative, because she was forced to flee her abusive partner. She lost her job as a consequence of the domestic violence and has no savings. Her son's Medicaid was not active, and she did not have any money to buy the prescriptions. The CHW, our community health worker at the emergency room, activated her son's Medicaid and found the prescriptions for free. In addition, she referred Mario and Isabel to the Pathways Navigator at Enlace Comunitario, which is an agency that works with victims of domestic violence, who helped her find housing, also helped her with an attorney to deal with the domestic violence issue and child support, and in addition, helped Isabel to apply for food stamps and got her connected with counseling for her and her child. Through this story, I just want to highlight our structure, our new robust system of community health workers. In addition to the 18 navigators that are housed at these 13 agencies, we have now access to more than 15 community health workers that are in the primary care settings and at the emergency department. They work side by side, they cross-refer to each other. Pathways have been instrumental in cross-training both sides of, both groups of CHWs. They come together once a month to get to know each other, to understand better what resources are available in the community. And it has become a very robust system of community health workers, helping the most disenfranchised people in Bernalillo County. So I would like to take this opportunity, through this example, to ask you to support this Pathways program, given that we are now, we're other sources of funding, having additional community health workers that are complementing the Pathways program. I feel, going back to what Steve McKernan was saying, I feel that Pathways is becoming a model, is becoming a very, very enhanced and very effective program to deal with the social determinants of health of all these individuals that are very poor and disenfranchised in Bernalillo County. So I'm asking for your support to increase Pathways funding, but I'm also asking you to consider keeping Pathways under the UNM Office of Community Health. If Pathways moved to the county, we won't have this interconnected system between our Pathways at the clinics and at the ER, and the Pathways navigators. So please consider keeping Pathways under our roof. Any questions? With that, I just end this presentation, and want to ask you if you have any questions for us or for Dr. O'Donnell.
Thank you very much. Thank you both. Are there any questions? Okay, Commissioner Casada?
Madam Chair, it's not, well, it's not a question, really, it's more of a comment. We have, excuse me, we had a constituent call me two weeks ago, I think, two weeks, I guess. Called me two weeks ago. We have a 71-year-old man, which I won't use his name, we'll call him Elizabeth. Okay. He called our office, and we come from the social side of the community, and he was living on a property with his cats, and didn't have nowhere to go, sitting on a property that zoning is forcing the owner of the property to do something about this citizen of our community, and especially, he lives in my district. So me and my assistant, who's been working in the community for 30 some odd years, says, we can handle this. We can do this, right? We'll fix this. We can help this man. And I don't know if any of you here have tried to navigate how to help somebody by yourself at this point, but this is very difficult. I'm going to tell you that we have not, we're a little sad, because we're not as successful and confident as we were two weeks ago, as we are today. So today, I asked my assistant, you need to call Pathways?
Yes.
Because we have pushed this as far as we can go, and we've ran into nothing but brick walls, and we're unable to do something. And I'm talking about a guy who's grown up here all his life, who's worked for YDI, who knows all these programs, who knows what, I thought, knows exactly how to get everything done, and how to get things done, and found out very quickly in a couple of weeks, that I don't know anything, and I need assistance. So just imagine, just imagine that 71-year-old man, by himself, without anybody helping him. And the only reason somebody's helping this man is because of the man who owns the property, zoning went to him, who's going to find him for having, he lives in this little RV. So this gentleman does have Social Security, he has money coming in, but he has no, he doesn't know where to go with it. He doesn't know how to help himself with it. And if it wasn't for that man, I would not know about him myself. So your stories ring true to me, and I just wanted to share that story with you, because we are experiencing that right now. And we're hopeful that you can help this man in the future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. That was a very good story of Elizabeth, but...
Thank you for getting that.
And those are the kind of stories that our community health workers see every day. And they go out of their way, not just to connect them with resources, but they do home visits. They go and find out what is the environment where individuals live. It's many times, it's not just lack of resources, it's lack of knowledge. Our community members have to navigate so many difficult systems, and the navigators are absolutely the most knowledgeable people we have in this community in terms of navigating systems. We have here some of the best community health workers. I want them to stand up, because they are absolutely outstanding. And without them, we wouldn't be able to help people like Elizabeth and any other member of our community.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So what's your, what's your, what's the population that you serve? How many clients do you have at any given time?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stevens, we average between 500 to 550 per year, unduplicated. That's basically what the budget can support.
And would you say that with your current budget, you are able to serve the demand?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stevens, not even close, no.
Would you say, would you say you serve 10% or 25%?
Well, I did a statistical analysis. There are approximately 120,000 people or so in Bernalillo County living below poverty. And if we're reaching 550 per year, I think we're falling well short of the demand. Not that every single person living in poverty would have to access Pathways resources, but a good portion of them, would I would think.
Thank you. So in your return on investment analysis, you use the term completed pathway? What does that mean? Or pathway completed?
Commissioner Hart-Stevens, thank you for asking that question. In your packet as well, what I've included in one of the handouts is, each pathway, we have 21 different pathways in this program. Housing is one, education is one, employment, healthcare, behavioral health, domestic violence, et cetera, et cetera. Each pathway has a series of seven or eight steps that are all prescribed, with a lot of input from the community. The goal is to get them to the final step. And what I've included in your packet is the final step for each of the 21 pathways. That's how we measure outcomes. It's getting people connected to services, but not only connected, but for example, to healthcare, they have to have seen a provider a minimum of two times. They have to have some type of financial assistance coverage in place. So our goal is to get them connected to the services, not necessarily to measure their health status. That's up to the providers. Same thing with housing. If we get a person housed, they have to remain housed for at least a three-month period for them to be able to complete that pathway. Because as we all know, some people will get housed, and a week later, they'll be evicted, or they'll be back out on the streets. So by putting a three-month period on that, at least we're providing some semblance of stability in their lives. And this is how we measure all of our outcomes in this program.
So how many of your clients would you say completes the pathway?
Currently, we have, I would say, we have probably a 2/3 retention rate. So 2/3 of the people that start the program finish it, about 66, 67%. And the individuals and families that we're serving are really, really experiencing a lot of challenges in their life. And so for the navigators to be able to retain 2/3 of that, I commend them, because these are really difficult situations that they're working with.
Just one last question. It seems to me, several years ago, I had a conversation with Lisa Diamond at this program, and she provided a lot of the data... program, and she provided a lot of data. Is there a component that the entities that you contract with, could they get paid if the pathway is not completed?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stebbs, the way we design our budget is a little different from the national model, and we do this intentionally because there are some very small nonprofit organizations here that really couldn't float funding for several months to their staff. So, in our budgets, we built in approximately thirty percent of the award that goes to each of the organizations, gets divided by twelve, and that's an automatic monthly drawdown. So, they're guaranteed to receive a certain amount of money each month. The other seventy percent of their reward is based on deliverables. So, this way, we're trying to help them be able to pay their navigators in case they don't complete those pathways.
Thank you, and I, thank you for clarifying that. I do recall that, and I thought this is sometimes a model that it really requires outcomes before the bulk of the payments are delivered. So, thank you for your great work. You know, again, several years, many years I've gotten presentations or talked to people about the effectiveness of the program, and just, at the present time in my life, being a care coordinator for my parents, I just cannot imagine how somebody can navigate the health system, insurance, appointments, ER visits, whatever it entails, without some kind of help. It's hard enough for me with access to all the resources that I have, and I can only imagine how difficult it is for people with income barriers, language barriers, transportation barriers. So, I really have a lot of respect for the work that you and all of the navigators do, certainly support continuing the program, and again, trying to provide the resources to expand access to the group we can. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I also want to add my thanks, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission.
Item C is been deferred, and we go next to the approval of minutes, that's item eight.
Approved.
There's a motion and a second. Did you get the motion and a second? Okay. To approve the minutes of January tenth, twenty-seventeen. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say no. The motion carries. We have before us the consent agenda. That would be item aye, item nine. There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. And Madam Clerk, I guess I should get five resolution numbers, and then we'll vote on it.
All righty, let's start with FR twenty seventeen dash seven, dash eight, dash nine, dash ten, and dash eleven.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say no. The motion carries, and that we approve the consent agenda. All right, let's see. That was item nine, so we go to item ten, which is the adoption ordinance amendment to the county code. Is that the right, am I in the right track here?
Yeah.
Okay, the capital improvements program ordinance revisions, and so this is to, we're supposed to conduct a public hearing, so we'll proceed with that public hearing. And Julie, do we have anything, anyone signed up to speak on the?
We do not.
All right. So, I didn't know if anyone has any questions for Mr. Campbell regarding these revisions. Are there any questions? Okay. If not, I move approval. There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number. Madam Clerk, the next ordinance number would be?
Twenty seventeen dash one, Madam Chair.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say no, the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. That takes us to ten B. This is economic development, Local Economic Development Act.
Madam Chair?
Sure. Related to El Pinto Foods. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we published this item back in December, I brought up a potential conflict of interest. We were going to have a legal look at it a little more in-depth. They are a client of mine, not a current client, but I've done work for them. I could do work in the future. So, out of abundance of caution here, I'm just going to recuse myself from this vote.
So, I believe we have, the sponsor for this is Commissioner Talbert, and I, did you want to just go ahead and have?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know Mayling is here to brief us on this, so Mayling, if you would please give us the lowdown on El Pinto.
Was that me or him? Sorry, is that him? Okay. Madam Chairwoman, the economic development staff recommends the approval of the ordinance authorizing the Bernabeu County Commission to approve a local economic development agreement with El Pinto Foods LLC. Tonight, you'll make two motions, one to adopt the ordinance, and then approve, the second is to approve the financial resolution appropriating the budget in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents for the economic development department. I'll stand for questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Armijo? Commissioner Stebbins? Okay.
Second. Thank you.
Mr. Chamberlain, we have to convene a public hearing. We have one signed up.
Okay, I'm sorry, we needed to, okay, we've kind of skipped a little bit here. There's no one signed up, and then, of course, Madam Clerk, we do need a resolution.
We have one person signed up.
Oh, we do, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Tad Neminski?
Oh, he's back. He heard me.
Thank you. My name is Tad Neminski. Well, last one was very emotional monopoly with another monopoly with UNM, controlling our state, welfare, money. Well, yes, economic development money plenty goes to UNM hospitals, buildings, all over. Now, UNM campuses, CNM campuses, APS, et cetera, et cetera, economic development. There's what I'm coming here, you all politicians, creating welfare group and upper, which is rich group, and where is small businesses, where is middle class? And what we get, middle class and small businesses, tax bill. That's right. That's, that's how system, that's a corrupted politician, what they're doing, trying to eliminate the, simply middle class, supporting welfare, monitor welfare. We can see on the daily basis how many people, you go to downtown, you should go this Friday, Saturday, yes, many of them on the welfare. I'm sorry, where this money go, directly to them? No, to establishment, back pockets. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Talbert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we do have Jim and John Thomas here tonight from El Pinto. If they wanted to say a few words, they are our famous salsa twins, so, thank you, Mr. and Mr. Thomas, thank you.
Hi, I'm John Thomas, co-owner of El Pinto.
And I'm James Thomas, co-owner of El Pinto.
Well, welcome, and I think that we all feel very, well, we're very proud of El Pinto. It's in the Far North Valley, in case, I think so many people have probably already gone there, or they've gotten, they buy salsa on a regular basis, and I do, I think you have some of the best salsa. So, I think that we can say that we're very pleased to be able to assist in any way to help you grow your business, and that you've been a good business.
And we appreciate it very much, so, thank you.
I think this is definitely a win-win for both parties. I think the extra tax revenues we'll be generating, the extra jobs and all that, you'll find it's going to be a well-worked investment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the commission's support on this. Obviously, with our new urban charter, every IRB or any ordinance we bring before has to have a commissioner supported, and obviously, just being in the North Valley and District Four, it's exciting to always see the growth. I remember my tour out there when you were putting together the whole organic process and getting certified organic. You've got now free-range chickens running around, you know, having your own eggs. When there was an egg shortage, El Pinto didn't have an egg shortage because they had their own chickens. So, we appreciate what you're doing out there, and keep up the great work, and the big thing, I think, I hope that's not lost in this, is with this, twenty-five new jobs will be created, and right now, we can use all the jobs we can get, so thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, we have a, let's see, did I get an ordinance number now? I'm trying to remember, did I?
No, ma'am. Madam Chair, your ordinance is twenty seventeen dash two. Your financial resolution is twenty seventeen dash twelve.
Do I move these separately, or can I move them both together? Together? Okay. That would, separately, you said? Together, okay. So, we're going to, there was a motion and a second to adopt item one and item two. One is authorizing the agreement, the other is appropriating the budget. This is money coming through the state. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say no, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, if you could repeat the motion and the second?
Okay, so, it was moved by Commissioner Stebbins and seconded by Commissioner Talbert. Okay, I think that we have, thank you. There's another item on the agenda, it's item C, and the sponsor is Commissioner Johnson, so we'll just wait till he's coming. Thank you, Enrico, and you're going to be speaking to this on, as a staff person?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board of County Commissioners. Very simply, this item is an introduction. It's a homeowners' association disclosure fee cap. It's a motion to introduce and approve for publication legislation that requires homeowners and condominium associations impose a reasonable charge not to exceed two-hundred dollars, payable at the time of closing for preparation of a disclosure certificate as required by the state of New Mexico Homeowners Association Act, or for a disclosure statement or resale certificate. So, very simply, it imposes a fee not to exceed two-hundred dollars during closing, in many cases, most cases, in where the homeowners' associations are required to provide their, for example, their covenants, their CCNRs, deeds, restrictions associated with homeowners' associations. So, this is something that is very similar to an item that the city had approved several, oh, about a year ago, maybe a little less.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this is an item that was brought up at the West Side Coalition meeting a little while back, and the state did a very good thing. I mean, a lot of times, people are buying into communities where the homeowners' association may or may not be in very good financial stead, and so, a disclosure was important during that process, so they knew what they were getting into and not assuming liability with the purchase of property that they were unaware of. However, some of the homeowners' associations decided that this was an excellent opportunity to make some additional money, and the fees would vary wildly across the board throughout the city of Albuquerque. I know it was a big problem. And you could have fourteen hundred dollars for about eleven pages worth of material that was talking about financial disclosure, information that was available to all of the homeowners who were members of that association. So, this attempts to keep that a reasonable cost. I predict that everyone will charge two-hundred dollars, but that, I believe, is more than adequate to cover their costs for this new, potential new member coming in of their homeowners' association, and I think it probably is something that needs to be addressed at the state level as well, but until then, homeowners' associations within Bernabeu County will have that cap in place. The city's ordinance has a little bit of a deficiency in it, in that they can charge two-hundred dollars per item, which means it's more like four, or six, or eight-hundred dollars, depending on how many different items are asked for as part of that disclosure. But I think this is a common sense way to go about making sure that people have the information that they need, and that they're not overpaying on the backside of this, and unpredictably as well, because that was one of the other issues. You get into a closing, and you've got a buyer, and all of a sudden, there's a fourteen hundred dollar charge that wasn't netted out or predicted by the brokers that are supposed to be, and the title companies, for that matter, that come up with this amount. So, with that, I'll move approval for publication and ask for your support.
Hey, Commissioner Talbert, or by Commissioner Stebbins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll second that. I just want to confirm, so this isn't a cap on the dues that a homeowners' association can charge, it's simply on fees at closing that they could say, "Oh, it's going to cost me X in order to bring this new person into the homeowners' association," correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Talbert, that is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stebbins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Enrico, is this a fee that's currently being collected?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hart-Stebbs, this is a fee that probably is not, we don't collect the fee, the county. This is really just to impose a cap that regulates the amount of fees that the different homeowners' associations can charge, clients, buyers, sellers, and so on. So, it's not a fee that we would collect, but it is an ordinance that we would enforce.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
There's a motion and a second to move this item forward to, for consideration, and I guess there's a time here. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed say no, motion carries. I don't know what I'm talking about. Okay, so, that takes us to item fourteen, and that's the announcement for the next commission meetings. Tuesday, February twenty-first, at three o'clock, is our next zoning meeting at these, in these chambers. Tuesday, the same day, at four-thirty, is a board of finance meeting, and then our next administrative meeting is on the twenty-first at five o'clock in these chambers. I want to thank all of you for taking time to be here. I know we got a little late, I thought we could be moving a little faster, but, and a thank you to the staff, and thank you to all of our employees. Good night.